Good morning, everyone. It's 7:00 AM on May 1st, 2019. Happy May Day. And we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee, the whole, to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum.
First item on the agenda is a discussion of Public Improvement 5290, Lincoln Avenue Street Project. And we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, your honor, and members of this council. Before you is a memo in regards to Public Improvement 5290. This is a Lincoln Avenue resurfacing project, both east and westbound lanes, from Broadway Street to High 94. This is also in program into the State Transportation Improvement Program. This project, if you recall, this project would be through the State Transportation Federal Aid Project. This is funded 80 percent construction only with the federal government administered through the state of Minnesota. Interstate engineering, we've substantially completed the project in plans and specifications. We estimate this probable cost is about $1.5 million. Therefore, we must publicly advertise for bids, minimum 21 days. Just recently, actually yesterday, I got final approval from M.D.O.'s Central Office, authorizing the city to bid on this project. If referred to the map right there, the title sheet, that has all the appropriate signatures, authorizing the city to proceed with this project. So we tentatively scheduled the bid opening for May 30th to at 2:00 PM in these council chambers. So at this time, I'm requesting authorization, number one, to accept the project plans and specifications for this project. And number two, authorization to advertise for bids for this public improvement 5290.
Thank you, Brian. Does someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions for Brian? If not, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Item number two is also Brian Uvaro, and that is a recommendation to accept an easement agreement with Fergus Falls School District for project 5954.
Yes, thank you. I just want to recap a little bit, give you update on other things. We accepted three bids for this project on April 23rd. The apparent low bidder was R.L. Larson out of St. Cloud. They bid an amount was $2,849,571 cents. The engineer's estimate was $2.4 million for this project. At this time, myself and more engineering were evaluating all the bid results and current market thresholds. We look to have more information and a recommendation at the May 20th, public hearing for this project as well. So we'll have more information on it. But the matter at hand is in regards to easements during the design phase and everything. If I want to refer to this, it was determined that we had lack of adequate utility and street easement generally located along Summit. This is an easement agreement that's already been exhibit that we've been working on. I just want, if you follow my cursor here, Freiburg Avenue, Summit Avenue runs westbound straight here, and then Sheridan Streets. A few things to note, we have a large water main that's going to be relocated, realigned. I think that's an order about 14 inch. There's really no easement recorded for this that we can find. We also during design determined that other easements, number one, the screen line indicates the new storm sewer alignment to better serve. This will help with the berry depths that if you drive on Sheridan, you currently see some of the shallow depth conditions and what it can create. So that's one aspect of this easement that's all bounded shaded within this slight yellow solid hatch. The other is in regards to the water main itself. We propose installing a new 16-inch water main, generally in the green space along the north side of Summit Avenue. That's indicated by this dashed water dash line here. The third aspect with this easement is the street itself. If you see this boundary line right here, our existing road, it may be hard to see, but a portion of Summit Avenue already lies outside of our property. So because of this, we've engaged and spoke with the school district about this. They are very amenable to what we've prepared and discussed and everything as far as these easement acquisitions. Therefore, the necessary documents were prepared. This is, like mentioned, a modified version of the exhibits. I've also attached some of the preliminary draft agreements for these easements, prepared by more engineering also in your packet, too. Initial offer was for these street and utility easements was discussed with representatives of school district. We intend, we offer, tentatively offering $17,920 for these easements, for these street and utility easements. We base this off some school valued land and a price per square foot of 53 cents. At this time, representatives have consented. However, official board and city council action is required to fully execute these agreements. So at this time, I'm authorizing, requesting authorization for myself and a city attorney to execute these necessary agreements and the preliminary payments to independent school district 544 in the amounts of $17,920.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to offer?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Brent.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? I have one, Brian.
Sure.
So is the bid that was overestimate, does that tell us anything about the upcoming season? Is there anything in there that we can read about the upcoming season?
Well, what we do know, when we do get, and like I said, the final recommendation, we are looking at the market prices in the surrounding area. And there seems to be, there's a confluence of a lot of factors you got to look at when it comes to taking bids. What we do know from areas as far as St. Cloud, Detroit Lakes, everywhere, we're seeing a lot of similarities in bid results. And we're not quite sure, basically, those are indicators of what a lot of communities are proceeding with in the current market. But we plan on, like I said, on May 20th, more engineering will be here when they're done with their analysis to help provide some of the information with the market itself. And then also, I've identified some specific aspects for this project that does generally reflect in some of your bidding prices, as we know on Sheridan and everything. It is probably some unsuitable soil conditions there as well. We are enhancing the road section, doing a few things that were to try to mitigate some of these muck, these field conditions. But like I said, there's a, there's a lot of factors that we look at. We look to, once that recommendation, we're looking to providing a lot of information what we found on it so far.
No more on May 20th. Thanks, Brian. Any other questions for Brian? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Brian, you have one more?
Thank you.
You have a College Way project update for us.
Two more, actually, but.
All right. Who's calling?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to provide an update and, and update on previous council action. This is in regards to Public Improvement 5312, College Way resurfacing project from Tower Road to Western. This is state, state aid number 126124001. Interstate has completed the revised drawings for this project. I noted three things in this memo that I'd like to show up on the screen, under this source screen. One of the proposals that was some time ago presented to the council unauthorized was the addition of bike lanes on this project. We reviewed it. We have a revised striping plan. These are the actual plan, modified plan sheets themselves, but this project consists of adding six-foot bike lanes throughout the project corridor for both east and westbound. One of the aspects of this project that made this very conducive was we're having a consistent shoulder. If you know the area, generally located from Western to Kennedy Park Road, it's a very narrow section, so, and various shoulder widths. We're mean, with this project, reconditioning project, we are constructing a consistent six-foot wide shoulder on both sides. So that would help improve a lot of things. But like I mentioned, it's very conducive for doing the bike lanes themselves and having a separation between vehicular lanes and the bike lanes themselves. The other aspect I wanted to point out, that's we're getting prices for, is here noted on the plan, Kennedy Park Road, the solid gray hatch on College Way, that's the areas that we're resurfacing. If you recall, in the previous memo, Lincoln Avenue, we're doing both in east-westbound lanes. So I added a portion of this intersection, so we have some consistency between these two road sections and have that completed. The third aspect is in regards to the intersection near Tower Road. Currently, right now, we're looking to amend the striping where it meets Tower Road. We're looking to install, currently, near center line, we have a, we have a through and a left in northbound turn lane. We're looking to revise that to just, to a dedicated left northbound lane. And also in the turn lane, we're going to revise that to make that a through right lane as it meets Tower Road. So at this time, these have been submitted to Central Specialties, the prime contractor that is contracted to do this work. I also want to follow up with this project. This is carryover. We've had a reconvene on our project, on our project schedule. Currently, right now, if you go out there, they're doing some colored extensions that are required for this project and associated with the shoulders. The contractor is anticipating beginning primarily contingent of road restrictions the week of May 13th. We've already began sending out notices to all the abutting residents, excuse me, business owners and everything. And we'll be posting a little more information on our website, too, to help provide public updates on this project, so.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian?
How much, I mean, how restrictive will access be for those businesses, Brian?
There, there will be, from the plans, there will be, more so towards the west, west portion of the area. There, we're going to have to have some solid closures because we have to improve, excavate the base and increase the section. If you recall, this, this portion down there, we did cores a few years ago, and we determined that we have varying street base strengths. So we want to make a consistent nine-ton road section throughout. There is temporary access plans that's been developed and integrated in the plans from last year and everything. So Central Specialties has indicated their abilities to move quite fast with this. So it's going to be kind of work, see as we go. There will be staging with traffic control, but there is temporary access supposed to be provided and secured for. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Brian, you got anything else for us?
One more. That Tower Road and College Way intersection that at one time, month or two ago, we'd asked about, around about there, and then now that the swap has happened with the county, what is the chances and how would that proceed? What would be the next step to see something happen on that?
The next step, yes, would be to enter an agreement perhaps with the county and see if, what their appetite, number one, is to proceed with it. I know one of our long-range plans, yeah, they'd be looking at it. We do have currently three roundabouts in conceptual design as we, as we speak right now. There'll be more information as those get further developed. I could make a request if this council, if we want to add this intersection to the project, but that would be up to the council right now if they want to make that official request. We do have three. We're currently going through a jurisdictional swap. I would advise if we complete the swap and get the commissioner's orders, and then they're also going to be doing some speed studies along with that. So with the work in action, I'd recommend if we could hold off a little bit, but something we can definitely, I could make a request to the county.
I just, since I was asked about it, and since people will be wondering if it's coming or not, I just thought if it was on the radar somehow, I don't know that it would necessarily be a part of this project this summer, certainly wasn't expecting that at all. Just was looking to get it on the consideration list, you might say, for the county as they're looking at it. So whatever the process would be for that, that's what I was looking to.
I can request an agreement, just like on the previous agreements. The cost share is determined from each branch of a roundabout. So I would envision on this one to be a 50/50 split. That's based if the county is willing to evaluate this at this time. I can make that request and see what they would like to do.
Yes, I wouldn't mind seeing that request being made, just to get the, get it on their list and so that there's a, basically a note that there's an interest in seeing this happen.
Just to get the ball rolling. Be a good place for one.
Sure.
So I'd like to, I guess I'd like to see us do that, at least make the request and see what the county's reaction is.
Certainly. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions of Brian on this one? If not, we'll move on to item four, which is public improvement.
Oh, that's your topic, sorry.
Yep. Public Improvement 7199. Brian?
Yes, thank you again. This is the final request. This is in regards to Public Improvement 7199. This is sanitary sewer main improvements on Lincoln Avenue from Broadway to St. Andrews. Last fall, we awarded the construction service contract to Lemedian Sons an amount of 200, roughly $260,000. This was significantly less than the engineer's estimate. This consists of two open spot repairs in this area, along, followed by the installation of a CIPP Cure and Place Pipeline in the sewer mains themselves. This is trenchless technology. This is work that we, with the open cuts especially, we wanted to get completed in advance to the first memo I brought up with the Lincoln resurfacing project. We just had, recently had a pre-construction meeting with this, and based on bid prices, requesting authorization to accept a change order in amount of $49,870. This is predicated on, the contractor will be on site. We have some additional candidates. I just want to get more of the lateral sewer lines completed, and the contractor will be mobilized on site. This is a little bit more than a construction contingency, but we do have sufficient funds to proceed with this project. So I'm requesting at this time authorization to accept change order number one in the amount of $49,870.
Would someone like to make a motion to recommend that to the council?
I'll make that, your honor.
Justin, thank you. Caroline, is there any, are there any questions of Brian? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is the Otter Cove Children's Museum project, and we'll call on Tasha Rolfs. Good morning, Tasha. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Well, thank you all so much for having us here this morning. We are extremely passionate about the state of Fergus Falls. And after last night, I think we're all walking around with a little spring in our steps, truly feeling inspired by what happened last night, the synergy and the inspiration and the hard work and dedication that's being put forward to make this a really successful and vibrant place for us to live, work, and play. And I, we truly feel honored that you are having us here just to be more aware of our initiative in hopes that you'll support it as well in the future. We, we know that vibrant downtown is the success, is truly the heart of any city, and we want to help make Fergus Falls downtown truly vibrant, vibrant for young families. We've been working on this initiative, Otter Cove Children's Museum, since November. We are so proud of the name, first of all, as should the city and the county. I mean, we sent out a survey in November, over 300 people took it, and three individuals suggested this name, three separate people. So we said, you know what? I think that should be it. We first had to find out that otters truly do live in coves, which we did. We did our research. But we had to make sure that we are honoring the city and the region and, and the county with this incredible initiative. And now that we are in this, the process of making this more public, since we've been working on it since November, we truly feel that the city council and the city needs to be at the forefront of our efforts and be the most informed individuals possible. So we are out having so many fundraising conversations right now, but we know that we want you to be the most informed public, and so that's why we have a very special reveal for all of you this morning. I'll give you that in a second. So I grew up in the Twin Cities, and my husband was relocated to Fergus Falls for his job. And that was a hard, that was a hard conversation to have when we weren't even married yet, you know? This was like, this was almost married, but not. And I said, okay, what's the closest biggest town to Fergus? Fargo, sweet, okay, I'll go there. And I worked in Fargo, I got my masters in Fargo, and I was just up there, just living the Fargo life, coming back here in the evenings and like trying to get that big city feel that I had when growing up, you know? And then all of a sudden, two years ago, it hit me. I'm staring at my one-year-old daughter, saying, why am I putting my efforts into Fargo? I need to be putting my efforts where you're going to grow up. And so I started a year ago thinking, how can I give back to the city? And I look at some personalities in Fargo, Doug Burgum and Greg Tavene, their phrase is create the city you want to live in. That's what I've been doing for the past year, introducing Otter Cove Children's Museum. We want to attract and retain young families to want to live and stay in Fergus Falls, and we want to attract young families, grandparents, caretakers, other schools, daycares, preschools, to want to visit Fergus Falls. Otter Cove Children's Museum, we truly believe, whoop, should, how should I page link?
Keep going, just do it up and down.
I'll do that. Perfect. So Otter Cove, we know that children need a place to stimulate minds and release physical energy. We also know that we want to attract skilled workers to want to move to the area. We want to engage, encourage families to visit Fergus Falls. Right now, every other city around us has an indoor playground, and our moms, our caretakers, our daycares, they're leaving town and they're going there, and they're spending their money there, and they're shopping there, and they're eating there. And we're missing, we're missing out on a lot of sales tax that could be collected from that regard. We're also wanting to provide school groups a unique and engaging field trip opportunity. We want to have a birthday party room, the one and only children's birthday party room in Fergus. There is not one yet. A true birthday party experience for local families. You don't have to clean your house when you have a birthday party. Come to Otter Cove. Come to Otter Cove. We also want to encourage families to keep it local in the weekends. You're not leaving town for this. We figure in some rough estimates and polls that we've done through our Facebook page, that about 50 percent of young families have driven to Detroit Lakes or Fargo or Alexandria specifically for their indoor play options. And that's a lot. That's a lot. So we do think that if we can attract and retain those young families, we're going to see a difference in economic development. We're going to see a difference in workforce. We know we need that, school enrollments and church memberships. So current situation, why we need it? Well, there's not a lot of indoor play options in Fergus. We got the YMC, we're a member, we exhaust that place, trying to make sure our kids have those physical opportunities. The library has a beautiful imaginative play area, but you may not climb it. And within one hour of the library opening, on their grand opening day, within one hour, they were printing off do not climb signs and putting them on top of the boat and the playhouse. Children are wanting to climb. And then you got Burger King, I can't get in there. I don't know when it was cleaned last. My daughter can't scale it, it's too tall for her. So it's an option, but truly, families are leaving. They're leaving. DL has an indoor playground, Fargo has an indoor playground and a children's museum, and Alexandria has the bounce houses in the mall and a brand new indoor playground. We frequented all of these. We are hungry for these opportunities. But the thing is, is all of these cities have the exact same brand, indoor playground. If you live in DL, there's no need to go to Fargo. You have pretty much the exact same one, and so that's where we're going to differentiate ourselves. Herum, you know, they're building one. So this is the important thing, there's nothing within 90 miles that has the indoor playground and the children's museum under the same roof. That's where we differentiate ourselves. That is where we attract out-of-town individuals, because we have something different, a different indoor playground, a different experience with children's museum exhibits under the same roof. We are working with a children's museum consultant. Some of you got a chance to meet him last night. He was at State of the City. He's from Pelican Rapids, and his set designer's from Elizabeth, and they work across the country, helping start up children's museums from Mankato to Louisiana. This is what they do, and they're putting some efforts into, into Fergus Falls and Otter Cove right now, and it's phenomenal what they've come up with, because they want to help us make Fergus and make Otterdale a regional destination. And the families agree. Here's our survey, 302 people, well, one person's having a bad day. But 301 say that this is needed. This is needed. This was shared on social media, but this is needed. This is what people are saying. And so we have identified that as much as it's needed, you know what else is needed? Downtown vibrancy, downtown traffic, young families coming downtown, people from, in-town people from out-of-town. We want to help with that. We're passionate about that. We want to be that catalyst to help bring those, those people downtown. So here's what we've identified. A local businessman is purchasing this building from the Masons within the month, and he is renting it to us. We have first right to own the first floor, and he's also offering us the basement, which I'm hoping someone else can maybe rent it for two years, because we just maybe can't afford that just yet. But we can move into the basement, and then also the Masons will be out of the top floor in two years. So we have a phenomenal three-story potential children's museum right in the heart of downtown. And so we know what we need to put in. The survey says, can we please have a place for our kids to climb? That's what our survey says. For number one answer was playground. So here it is, big reveal. You are the first people to see the rendering of Otter Cove's indoor playground, besides my husband. He's out last night. Honoring the region, honoring the county, honoring Fergus Falls. You see the falls of Fergus Falls, the double slide, the children are sliding down, the central dam that they are climbing up and through, the, the trees that are overhanging. We know Fergus has the beautiful trees that are overhanging. Those will be 3D and coming out from the wall. The, there's a little, there's opportunities to cross the river, the rope bridge, there's going to be a low-hanging zip line, there's going to be the monkey bar arch, there's going to be the little otter, baby otter pond where the baby otters are playing and have an opportunity to slide down and crawl through, and many balance opportunities, and truly it's going to be a phenomenal example of children's museum meeting indoor playground, converging the two, making sure it's educational, it's honoring the region, but it's physical. The physical play is there. You can see across the rope bridge, there's a little, there is a little tunnel which will lead to our otter den, which will have little portholes that the parents can make sure they see what's going on. But the children are crawling in there and truly living like otters in their otter den underneath this incredible play structure. The artist was inspired by the topical geographic maps and how they have this beautiful landscaping that is, that you can see from a topical, a topical map. And so that is our rendering right now of the, you are the first, you are the first. We're going to release it soon, but it's exciting. We're very excited. We also, oh, I did it again. We also believe that with this, we need to honor Fergus Falls in another creative way, which is our mini downtown Fergus Falls. Here's the concept. We don't have a rendering yet, but we have businesses who are already part of it. Service Food will be the grocery store the children will pretend to shop in, play in. And we also have Lundin Bookstore that the children will be playing in. We also have Prairie's Edge Dental, a local downtown dentist office that the children will be playing in. We're contacting a cafe and a veterinarian office as well. So very exciting things for that mini downtown Fergus Falls, true children's museum concept right here. We're going to have an otter stage that will be full of guest performers, musicians, storytellers, and we do hope to be using that amphitheater that will be located right behind us to bring in some incredible, incredible programming as well, and make, help make that park vibrant. And then, of course, the birthday party room, everyone's asking about it. We might need to have two, you know? Everyone's asking about this concept. True, honoring the art, the art history and the artists of Fergus Falls, we're having a huge maker space, a craft and maker space where the children are painting vertically, horizontally, on the floors, on the walls. I mean, it's going to be phenomenal maker space where there's open-ended crafts and closed-ended. And you know what Fergus wants? They want options on the weekend. Here's also what our survey revealed. Our beautiful library is only open Saturday mornings. Families are not feeling like there's indoor play options for, well, nine months of cold are we at right now? Nine months of cold? We need those indoor play options. And so we're going to be open on the weekends. We're going to have potentially selective hours. We'll talk more in depth about that, but the weekends for sure. We know that this is exactly what the city needs at this point in time when we're attracting and retaining, attracting and retaining, that we can help create that vibrant downtown. And we look to the city council for your support. We're hoping to really, we're hoping to break ground and do some demolition inside that building starting June 1st and open November. There are so many concepts in town that we want to have. There are so many concepts in town that we want to happen, and I know that sometimes they take longer than we'd hope. And that's why we're choosing to do this privately, with some help from the public as well. But we're choosing to do this privately so it can happen. It can happen soon for our families. Can we open up any questions?
Thank you, Tasha, for that presentation. What questions do you guys have?
Are you looking at a specific age group for what this will?
Yes. So our exhibits and the experience will be tailored to ages zero to 10. We're not going to be turning away, you know, 11 or 12 or 13-year-old even, if they want to be part of the experience. But that's what we're gearing it towards, as there are, you know, older kids have the opportunity to be involved in so much. And there's not that physical play options for this demographic as much.
I'll just say, your enthusiasm is contagious.
Thank you.
And not just this morning, but just the energy that you've created in town around this project. I mean, I hear it all the time. People are so excited about this. People are so excited to help make it happen.
Thank you.
Like the gentleman you talked about that's purchasing the building, just the partnerships that have kind of come together around this is really, is really exciting.
Thank you.
And I'm excited for the city to consider being a partner in this and being, and helping. So I think we had some questions over here, Scott and Tom. Tom?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll just echo what Ben said. I mean, I think you guys are doing a fabulous job on this. And I think the rendering looks great. And my, my only question or wish would be the, is, is there any chance of adding a structure like they have in Detroit Lakes, that kind of three-dimensional grid that they have in their climbing area? Or is it because of the physical limitations of the building, would that, something like that not be possible?
So the thing about those, those same structures is that, one, they're not very children's museum-esque. I mean, it's very indoor playground. And so, they're not as open to educational opportunities as this is, you know, we're teaching the children about the history, about the landscape, about, you know, about what makes Fergus Falls truly Fergus Falls. And so, this is more children's museum-esque, whereas, you know, we have some ceiling limitations going downtown.
Yeah.
And I know that that is where we want to help revitalize. But if we, if we went into a larger facility, we could do something like that. We also wouldn't be getting the outside traffic if we're creating something like that. So we're, we're hoping to differentiate ourselves by being something different. Now, with that being said, I think that if, if there is an opportunity for a community center, say, down the road, I don't know why we couldn't have Ottercove Children's Museum, Ottercove Indoor Playground, Ottercove Teen Zone, the basement of this building, we've been talking about the teen zone. It makes sense, kids hang out in the basement, teens do, right? So to make the basement the teen zone with an arcade and some potential options, so like, I mean, we can use, we can, we can branch out. I don't think it's going to be now, that type of structure, but I wouldn't cross it off for the future.
Okay, yeah.
The more physical play options, the better.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Your June 1 start might be a little optimistic, because we have not, I'm involved with the many.
Yes, yeah.
We have not received an offer yet.
Yes.
On the building. And before we can go ahead with that, we have to bring that to our membership.
Right.
To see if they want to sell the building. This is just a few of us working on things with the building.
Yes.
We have an older group now, and they're getting older, and the 27 steps going upstairs to our meeting room is getting, getting tough with some of them.
Right.
We do have a chair that goes up, but that chair is, it's about as old as the building.
And we know that there, the talks are, you know, we're, we're obviously relying on a landlord to kind of do some of that bargaining for us. And I know that he's in deep talks with all of you, and he's been hoping.
Like I said, we have not received an offer yet.
Right.
We would have to bring that.
And they just did a roof inspection last week. And so, he was kind of waiting on that roof inspection to make sure that what their offer would look like. And I know it might be done privately, which would eliminate a few steps, but yes, we know that there are definitely some bridges to still cross. Everyone just wants to know, where are you located? And, you know, we got to tell them what our number one option is.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Oh, yes, yes, I do, thank you.
Scott?
I like the drawing that you've put up here, and just for one of the details on it that I think is interesting, is it actually wet, or is it just blue carpet?
It would be blue carpet.
No, I mean, first of all, I have to say, I'm sorry for not getting back to you. I know, I received emails, and I've been kind of busy, and I haven't gotten back, but this is something I truly do believe is needed here. When I went door-to-door, there were so many people who said, "We need something for the kids to do in this town."
Yeah.
And my grandson lives in about two hours outside of London, England. And my daughter, when she came here, she says, "You need to find something," because they have a lot of stuff like this over there. And they keep him active all the time. I mean, we had to go to Fargo.
Yeah.
In order to find anything of this caliber.
Right.
In order for, because he's quite rambunctious and needs to be kept busy. So, I mean, I would welcome something like this in Fergus Falls. And I've, when I went door-to-door, this was something that was brought up as far as activities that needs to be here.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It seems to me, it reminds me, in some ways, of the Cat's Galleries, when, when that was a nonprofit that the city kind of partnered with and helping. And maybe that would, could that be something that we could look at as an example, and have staff look back how we, how the city partnered with that project and helping make that project work?
We sure could. We could research that for you, kind of look back on what we did. I know we have some community development funds that actually, it's the business development for Fergus Falls. That group oversees those funds. And we've used some of those funds here and there to do some studies, if you recall, some of our historic studies, neighborhood studies. We also did help the Cat's Gallery with those funds too. So that would probably be the pot of money where we would go looking for this, because we have a little more flexibility with those for community development activities, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
And being an indoor playground, I didn't know how much even Parks Department would be involved in something like that. I know that you have to pay to enter. You know, there is obviously a fee, but it is that physical play option. I should mention too, the hospital is our fiscal host. So they're talking about partnering with health and wellness. They're our fiscal host as we wait for our nonprofit status. But yeah, it's an indoor park, truly, in many ways.
On that one, Your Honor, the business development, we, I think we did, didn't we set aside some funds for daycare or childcare?
Good point, Anthony.
Maybe we could look at using those funds?
Yeah, the Business Development for Fergus Falls group did designate $10,500 of the remaining fund balance of the old EIC funds, that are now Business Development for Fergus Falls funds, for childcare and development funds like that, startup costs. So, yeah, Anthony, that's a very, that's an option.
Yeah, it's something that we, you know, because obviously, we wanted to, exactly what you're saying, is encourage young families to come, so, and that was kind of what the funds were for.
Sure, sure. As long as everyone knows that this is not, it's not childcare.
No.
Yeah. And we've had that question a million times, so I just want to make sure that you do know that.
But it's, but it's child, it's child activity and.
Child activity, yes, thank you.
You can't just drop your kids off and come back in like four hours.
But it's, it's child.
I missed that. I missed that yesterday in our conversation.
So, and, and those funds Anthony is talking about, those are not city funds, so that's even more flexible. Because of course, when you're working with city funds, we can only spend on what's called public purpose expenditures. We have to have statutory authority to spend those funds. Whereas those old EIC funds, or even the EIC loan funds, are flexible funds that are under the control of Business Development for Fergus Falls. So that would be completely up to that board. But definitely an avenue.
Yeah.
You bet.
But maybe we could have staff do a little research and come back with a recommendation to the council to consider about how we can be a partner in this? Does that sound good to everyone?
And probably to the Business Development for Fergus Falls Board too, so.
Thank you, Bill, for all of your insight.
We'll bring it up for the next meeting, which will be June, beginning of June.
We might be having one even sooner.
Okay.
Wonderful. We'd like to hear that.
Thank you so much, Tasha.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this morning. Thanks for this project.
Yes.
Got a lot of people excited. Speaking of business development for Fergus Falls, next up is Michael Olson. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Nice to see everyone this morning. I have a loan request this morning for our business development for Fergus Falls funds. A request was made at our April board meeting, and approved by our board, for a loan of $20,000 at 4% interest for a period of 12 years. This is a loan for rehab work being completed at 107 East Lincoln Avenue, downtown Fergus Falls. Pretty simple request, pretty straightforward remodel. So, just here asking for the council's approval to move forward.
Just, just letting off, this is obviously the old 50-wide building, and, you know, they're using local contractors to do the work. So this, you know, just as a plug, that, you know, this is the city investing in not only downtown, but in, you know, the money's staying in, in the, in the town.
Wonderful. Thanks, Anthony.
All for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Your Honor, members, I just wanted to mention too, this is the, as you'll recall, we put the new agreement in place, and this is the new protocol, that Michael will bring these before the council. What I envision is, we'll talk about them in depth at the committee of the whole, and then hopefully they can go on consent, and we don't have to make Michael come to the Monday meetings then, but.
Yeah, make him come to the 7:00 AM meetings.
That's your budget. So I guess, to, to cut to the chase, let's flesh out the details now, and, and don't linger questions to Monday, because I don't want to make Michael come to meetings on the same day. This is what we'll see going forward, is this type of process.
Well, I think having Anthony on that board, and being able to kind of represent with the board, their discussions, I think it should be a relatively smooth process, so.
And I think one of the other things that the board kind of also wanted to, is, you know, this is kind of, you know, there's a lot of criticism of the city, about we don't do anything. And, you know, what this should do is, you know, help get some exposure that, you know, here we, here we go, you know, we're spending $20,000 on improving downtown, and the fact that it is staying local, you know, that, that's, I think that's something we need to get out there, is that we're not sitting on our, on our, you know, hands and doing nothing. It is about improving the city, so.
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Michael.
This one's a fairly simple request too, and some of it a little bit more complex.
Tom?
Excuse me, do we know what the property's going to be used for?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
They say they have some people entrusted.
This is across the street from Don Pablo's. And it's currently actually under construction. Their storefront has been getting some stucco work done to it? Okay.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time? Motion carries. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a Place to Belong Garden Project, and I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. Continuing the theme this morning of partnerships and downtown beautification, I am excited to present this. I don't have nearly the enthusiasm as Tasha, but nonetheless, I think this is a great project, and I'm excited to share it this morning. I was approached in the last couple weeks by Van Elig, who's a board member with The Place to Belong. They're exploring a project to provide some of their clients and tenants, whatever they're called, a project related to gardening. And so, they approached me, asking if we could set aside a few parking spots in the lot that's just to the north of Pickett's Accounting Firm. The, we currently have, there's 22 spots in that lot, 11 of them are rented right now. The stalls that they're looking at for this project are against that retaining wall that's existing and in place. On the west side of that lot, there are a few spots rented in the area by Park Region. They've been approached, and they're willing to shuffle and move around to accommodate this project. What they're looking at doing is a gardening area of about 24 feet by 70 feet, and then an additional 20 feet for a storage shed picnic table, a place for people to sit and to enjoy that area. I mentioned partnerships. Home Depot has indicated that they are going to provide gardening tools and storage shed for this project. There's a handful of contractors. S&amp;S Construction of Pelican Rapids are going to be building the raised beds. Mark Christopherson with S&amp;C Construction will be doing the black dirt and making sure everything is good to go. When we were over there talking with Van and others at The Place to Belong last week, we met a few of the individuals who would be working in the garden and doing this project, and they were very passionate and excited about that. A Place to Belong provides valuable services to those in the community experiencing mental illness and other challenges as adults. And this is going to be a therapeutic and otherwise remedial project for these individuals. So essentially, what we're asking today is for your guys' blessing for them to use. It's, it's about six or seven parking stalls in that underutilized lot. They're, they're not looking to pay rent on those stalls, so essentially looking for your blessing to be able to use those stalls free of charge to provide this programming, allow these partnerships to form. And they're more than willing to return it back to its current condition if and when the program ends or needs to end due to a different use, or due to a need of the parking on behalf of the city. So I would recommend this morning that we give our blessing to allow this project to move forward. I think it's a great project, and I think the overall results for members that will use it in the community are going to be positive for the community.
Thank you, Andrew.
All for that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Krista. Any questions or discussions?
I do have to endorse the use of the word flop in the letter. I thought that was smart.
The other thing I should mention, Your Honor, quickly, is I failed to mention that Mr. Pickett's office will be providing the water, and the ability for them to use water to water the gardens, obviously, and whatnot. A lot of people coming together to make this a reality, and a lot of very good programming over there that will be enhanced by this.
Your Honor, just to go on, Scott.
Scott?
It sounds like a real good idea, and I think it's one that we should, that we ought to support, so I'd like to voice my support for it. Since it's a parking lot that doesn't have any pavement on it, and since it's part of the topic, I guess at some point, are we going to be looking at paving that parking lot? Doesn't have anything to do with this project, but I just wanted to get that out there, that among other places in town, this is one parking lot that ought to be on our radar to be paved.
I agree. Thanks, Scott.
I, I, we agree with that, Brian. I think Brian would agree.
Obviously, I, I agree, it's, it's a good project. I just don't want to be Debbie Downer, but, you know, just what's the city's liability? And is there going to be some sort of agreement that, you know, they have to keep it, you know, weed-free and tidy? You know, that obviously if it's going to become veg gardens, obviously, you know, you can, if you, if you don't maintain it, then it's going to become an eyesore. So will there be some sort of agreement in place that, you know, no different than any other resident, that if you, you've got, you've got an obligation to keep it tidy?
Yeah, Your Honor, members, I, I'll answer the first piece related to the liability, and, and this letter mentions it, but the, the policy related to A Place to Belong will cover the general liability, and, and we obviously are, are covered on our liability related to activities in the parking lot and in public places. So from the liability standpoint, I don't think there's a lot to worry about. I think your second point is a legitimate point. They've given us their verbal commitment to take good care of it, based on the amount of time that's spent at the facility by some of the members, and the passion that I had. I think it's going to be the nicest garden in town, to be quite honest with you. And they've, they've committed, and Van Elig has said multiple times, that if, if it's not taken care of, it's not done well, they will replace it. They're going to take a picture of the existing conditions, and they will replace it to that or better when it's done. or better when it's done. So I, we could put something in writing to that effect, but I am, I think there's going to be enough people involved and enough participation that it's going to be probably, like I said, one of the best-kept gardens in town. I'd be more concerned about people vandalizing and ruining things in the garden, and we've had that conversation, and that's not a major concern for them. It's the activity of gardening and the therapeutics related to that, and the pride that people take in it more so than the fruits of the labor and the vegetables. So we can take that further if you want to, but I really don't know that it's going to be a concern.
Jim?
These are above ground, right?
That's right. Okay.
Any other questions?
Will there be any signage on it indicating, you know, this is maintained by property of, anything like that that would identify who's responsible for it?
You know, we haven't discussed that, Your Honor, on me, but I think that's a good idea, and I think that we can ask Van and The Place To Belong to provide something along those lines, just because people will have questions and, and yeah. But they did, we did talk about, you know, can the general public come and use the picnic tables and use this area and enjoy it? And they were very much on board with allowing that to be another place for people to come and sit and relax, whether they're members or not, so.
Compare it to like at Lake Alice, you know, Friends of the, Friends of Lake Alice or wherever, there's gardens and other places in town that are assigned as being maintained by a given volunteer group. I thought it would be appropriate.
Good point. Thanks, Scott. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Item number eight is the Housing Task Force Study. I'll call on Ryan Veitlock.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, and members of the council. Yeah, kind of continuing once again this theme of partnerships this morning. So we're, the Housing Task Force is proud to present kind of the final report from the Housing Task Force. I want to point out just how broad of a spectrum of people that came together throughout the community for this task force. We had people, you know, government agencies, we had the county, we had, you know, our real estate experts come together, we've had developers, financial institutions, healthcare, employers, the HRA, and our community action partners as well, all kind of came together really to answer that, that question of how do we, you know, what policies, recommendations are needed to improve the quality and quantity of housing in Fergus Falls. So we spent most of last summer and early last fall meeting several times to look at different models that are working around Minnesota, looking at what the issues are. And what we came up with was the four, excuse me, the four goals that are in there. The report also kind of expands upon that a little bit with recommendations and kind of goes into a little bit more of the justification and the reasoning of why, you know, why the Housing Task Force thought that this was very important. So, you know, one of the major things is, you know, we looked at is that truly Fergus Falls, we have fallen behind our peer cities in terms of new housing starts and housing development. Most of our peer cities have bounced back from the recession lows, and in Fergus Falls, while we are beginning to see that improvement, I mean, this year alone, we're, we're up to more housing starts than we've had at this point in the year, probably in the last, I would say, 10, if not even 15 years. So, you know, so there are a lot of good things that are going on in the community, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of roadblocks. This is a very complex issue. Everything from, you know, affordability, what do we actually consider affordable? You know, affordable kind of has a connotation of its, you know, income-qualified buyers, but really what the task force was looking at is affordability as a whole. You know, so what does, you know, a skilled worker at Northern Contours, what, what type of housing do they need? And what we really came up with is that we have a roadblock in our housing cycle. And so hopefully, these recommendations will spur a conversation. This really is a beginning, not an end of the work. And we, the Housing Task Force understands this is going to be a partnership. This is going to take everybody working together really to kind of solve this issue. Because, you know, unlike the Twin Cities where there's that built-in workforce, or where there's these major developers that are coming in, you know, the greater Minnesota, it's a lot more difficult, you know, for a developer to take a gamble on a 50-lot subdivision or something like that. So hopefully, there's been, like I said, this will hopefully spur some good conversation, and we offer this as, like I said, a starting point, not, not an end of this conversation. So.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions this council has?
Yeah, we'd ask that there would be a recommendation to adopt.
Adopt the Housing Task Force study and make that motion and bring that to the council?
Oh, Your Honor. I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. Up next is a metal recycling license.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Yes, before you this morning is a request for a metal recyclers license for 712 East Hampton Avenue. Just as a reminder, licenses come through the council for final approval after staff has reviewed their application. The owner of T&amp;O Crushing applied for a metal recyclers license for the year 2019 back in January of this year. A little bit of history, we've been working with Mr. Friesen since December of 2016 to obtain compliance from several sections of the city code, mostly related to the nuisance standards. A criminal citation for these violations was issued by the city attorney in August of 2018, and it's going through that court process. So Mr. Friesen applied for this application, and staff is recommending denial of it at this point due to the outstanding criminal citation still, the fact that the application itself is incomplete. We're missing some information that we need still in the application. And a further inspection of the site, staff asserts that Mr. Friesen is doing more than just metal recycling. He's kind of crossed that line into what we would consider junk under section 4.20 of the city code. And there are several zoning and building code violations on the site still, including requiring a conditional use permit for operating a junk dealer or yard in the I-2 zoning district. The requirement that there does need to be paved parking, as this is access from a paved street, that there does need to be screening for the outdoor storage and the material, and that the building itself does have a lack of a connection to municipal water and sewer. Furthermore, Mr. Friesen needs to complete a site plan indicating what his plans are for the site. We've asked him numerous times to kind of clearly define what he's doing on the site, and at this point, we've not gotten enough information, I would say, to clearly classify that. So really, until staff has a better idea of what Mr. Friesen is collecting on the site, it's difficult for us to assist the applicant in what proper license he needs to apply for. I will say, in the last couple of weeks, he has been a little bit responsive to us. He came in last week and spoke with the building official about what he would need to do to construct fencing on the site. So I think he is slowly moving towards that direction, but this has been a long outstanding issue. And at this point, as I said, we would recommend that his application be denied, you know, until he can get the site a little bit further into compliance.
So tell me with the timeline, though, so he applies in January? And is it, is it an annual license, obviously, and would it normally be approved typically in January?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yep.
And is he, he's aware that this, you know?
Yeah, yes. We notified him via phone call. He's not returned staff's calls, but we've notified him a couple of times that, you know, we are recommending denial of this license at this point. His 2018 license was, was pulled because of his continued violations with city code. And so at this point, we feel it's probably not appropriate for us to recommend approving a license when there's still these outstanding issues on the site.
Absolutely. And obviously, it sounds like city staff is communicating, doing their best to communicate what is needed and.
Yes. It's been a long process. I mean, this has been going on since, you know, 2016, but this is a complex site, and there's a lot, a lot of layers to this onion that really need to be unraveled, so.
Thanks, Ryan. Did someone, Jim?
Are we working to get him to clean up the mess that's there?
We are. That's what the criminal citation is, and unfortunately.
It looks terrible.
Yeah, and I believe that is going to go to court in June, from what the city attorney said, so hopefully, we'll have something coming down from, from a judge that compels him to clean it up, or at least provide a plan to clean it up, so.
And if he doesn't, we go in and do it and charge him? Is that how that works?
Your Honor, since it's an outstanding court case, that would all be determined by the courts in relation to how that would be handled if there wasn't compliance with what the order of the court was. And I don't think, I'm prepared to speculate on how the judge is going to rule.
It's a risky business.
Do we have a?
I'll make them.
A motion to recommend to the council?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. And now we have a RTC Virtual Reality Project update.
This is my, my final item here this morning. So at the March 6 Heritage Preservation Commission meeting, the HPC did make a motion to recommend that the city council look at the feasibility of completing virtual reality filming of the Phase II deconstruction area of the RTC. We did reach out to a firm who specializes in this work, and we received a preliminary estimate of the cost. Back at your April 10 meeting, we did bring this forward from Twin City Visual, and we had a request from the council to go forward and look at, obtain some bids from some other, I won't really call them bids at this point, proposals from some other vendors. So we have done that. We obtained proposals from three companies in total. The consensus of it was that that first bid was probably in the ballpark. We're looking at about a $10,000 to $15,000 cost to do this, with around $100, you know, between $1,000 and $1,200 a year to host the model. So we, I've attached those three companies, so the original one is Twin City Visual, the second one is Ryan Hansen Homes actually stepped up and submitted a bid as well. The reasoning for that is that the same platform, the Matterport platform that they use for their real estate rendering, some of their 3D models, is the same platform that would be used for, for this. They have some familiarity with it. They came in right around the same cost as well. And then there is a gentleman who does, his name is Seth Simison, and I believe that's the one that maybe Councilman Ruffer had discussed. He does primarily exterior drone shots and things like that, but he does do some interior work. He came in and rated around that $10,000 to $15,000 as well. Staff has looked at the budget, and there is about $5,000 of unused GIS funds from some unused GIS aerials that could be used for this, but staff would recommend that if we are going to be forward with this, that, you know, some other potential sources of funds, including Friends of the Kirkbride, or possibly the County Historical Society for assistance in hosting the final product, would be something that we would need to look at as well. The other thing, obviously, that staff would be concerned about is that any, anything for this filming would need to be done before the Phase II deconstruction starts later this summer. So that's all that I have.
Any questions on that?
Was the question raised to possibly do something smaller? I mean, it's a 200,000 square foot deal, but maybe we don't need a picture of every closet? You know, maybe you do the 3,000 square feet that are most significant kind of a thing. It seems like there'd be a way to scale this thing down to the really significant parts, the powerhouse, maybe some of the more architectural features. Get something that would be a manageable project.
Yes, certainly. I mean, from what it looks like, we're looking at it's between four and six cents a square foot to do the filming, and then the models are right around 10,000 square feet. So, yeah, the smaller, the less number of models you get, the lower cost. The real lion's share of the cost is going to be, you know, the actual putting together of the footage. We probably wouldn't see too much savings in terms of labor, because still going to have to have staff, you know, their staff mobilize on the site. But, yeah, I think that's certainly something we could do. We could take that to the Heritage Preservation Commission. My only concern is, are we going to get bogged down in the weeds of what's important versus what's, what's not important? But that's certainly something we, we could look at doing, but I would raise a concern that if, that may impact the timeline for the Phase II deconstruction, so.
Well, it might impact the timeline, but then the thing never happens either, so that's why I would raise the question. If there was a way to have the Heritage Preservation Commission suggest a project that would be manageable cost-wise, I don't expect there'll be a lot of support for $10,000 project, but we maybe can support a $4,000 or $5,000 project. And if the HPC could put together a list of what they felt was the most important features, maybe we could revisit this and find a way to fund it. And whether it included the Friends of the Kirkbride or the Historical Society as part of that funding, it seems like it would be doable, so why not at least ask the question and try to find a way to do it?
Sure. And how about if we could at least bring it to the HPC and with the expectations of scaling it to a manageable size financially, but then also within the timeline, right? Just those two concerns, and see if they can come up with a recommendation to the council to get the project done under the timeline.
I will, I will, I will note, you know, unless HPC agrees to a special meeting, they meet the first Wednesday of the month, and they had no business today, so the soonest we could get it would be the first Wednesday of June. If they did not agree to a special meeting, I think, I think they would be open to that, certainly, but, you know, certainly do, don't want to guarantee a timeline.
So if they're willing to, yeah.
Your Honor, members, I was just going to say, too, we could be awarding a bid on May 20. We're opening them on May 8. Just, just so you guys have reference to that timeline, if there is the desire to proceed with this, whether it's a smaller version or the whole thing, it would be nice to know that today. And, because I think with the timeline we're looking at, we're probably going to need the authorization to go straight to the HPC and then initiate the project if we're going to try to get it done in time to not interfere with any timeline. So if, if the desire of the, of the council is there to proceed in this direction or to pursue this, it would be nice to get a firm understanding of that today and then have a, have the ability to just run with this thing and get it done, because I fear that we're going to run into timeline issues if we have to wait for another city council meeting. We may or may not be able to have all the answers by May 20, and then I'm guessing a contractor is going to be mobilizing shortly after road restrictions are done or after a bid is awarded, so.
I wouldn't be supportive of anything that's going to affect the timeline. We've gone through reiterations of this. I think that if the HPLC wants to look at, you know, focusing, if they're going to shrink the project, then look at the tower. I don't see that, you know, the other buildings are of the same historical, you know, value. I mean, yes, I mean, and I, I'm not prepared for the city either to fund it all. I want to see Friends of the Kirkbride or the Historical Society match funds to, you know, if we, if indeed we grant funds at all. I mean, we have limited financial resources for the Kirkbride maintenance going forward, so, and just, we can't delay construction of, of deconstruction of the site.
Other thoughts, Justin?
To your point, I think, you know, I'm not in favor of doing the timeline, but I think it's a good idea, to Scott's point, reducing it. Can we have in there, give them leeway to, we'll do a matching up to a certain dollar amount, and therefore, these other entities that are interested would have to match what, say it's, say we scale back to 5,000 as an example. We'd be willing to kick in 2,500. They got to kick in 2,500, and then also cannot impact the timeline of Phase II. I think that's reasonable, and then let them run with.
That sounds reasonable to me, affecting meet those criteria. I mean, we're willing to meet that.
Yeah, and Your Honor, and the other thing I want to mention, just for the, so we're all aware of it, is this hosting fee. And I'm not saying that, I'm not trying to advocate one way or the other, but I'm just reminding everybody that you're going to be looking at $800 to $1,200 a month, depending on which platform we land on, to host this on an annual basis going forward. So there's going to be an ongoing cost to maintain this.
And the city will say. And the, the value of this is, is not so much today as it is five or 10 years down the road, and so, you know, that, that is something we have to be very, you know, aware of, is that this, this could become an ongoing cost. I mean, we certainly would get the raw files, but they're just going to be photographs. You know, if you want that 3D, you've got to use this proprietary platform, and that there is a cost to host that.
I would think that that, we're sharing in the cost of the mobilization of this project, but that would be Historical Society, or that would be HPC. They, they'd be the ones I would, I would envision paying that fee yearly, because that's, they're the ones that are going to have access to it. That'd be my preference.
Yeah, I would hop on what Justin said. I mean, I think the agreement going forward would be that another group is responsible for that cost, you know, if, if we're going to enter into any kind of cost sharing. And I'm, yeah, I'm also not willing to alter the timeline. You know, I do, I do want to see some of these outside groups step up to the plate if this is something that's important. And, and so that's, that's what I would wait for. I would, I would be willing to possibly entertain some kind of cost sharing agreement, but.
Go ahead to your counsel first.
Sounds like we've put together a dollar-to-dollar match up to a certain amount that does not impact the timeline, up to $5,000. Is that what you're saying, Justin?
I think 2,500 would be what you'll say.
Yeah, 2,500, the city up to a $5,000 project that doesn't impact the timeline, and that does not have the city have any ongoing hosting costs? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I was, that's, I'm, I'm good with that.
Would it have to be a $5,000 project, or would, if they raised $5,000, we would just match up to 2,500? So they could do a $7,500 project? Is that correct? Because one thing, you know, Ryan pointed out, too, is that it's not necessarily the time it takes to take the pictures, they got to put it all together, so that, that labor fee is going to rack that up.
Sure. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Everyone understand the motion? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Scott.
This is a way of comment. I appreciate the motion. I think it's very likely that if the city at least gets the information together so that there can be a project to choose or not choose to do, that organizations like the Otter Tail County Historical Society and Friends of the Kirkbride will step in and say, we'd be happy to be a part of it. But there, those organizations aren't in a position to hire an org, hire a photographer and to, you know, put the deal together. The city has to put the deal together, and so in that way, I think it's very appropriate for the city to basically make the deal and then look to these other organizations to help with the financing and the ongoing cost down the road. Seems like a very appropriate way to handle it.
Thank you, Scott. Let's go.
One question I had is, could this be an Otter Tail County Historical Society project where the city contributes up to 2,500 and then, because what I'm hearing is you want someone else to host that, and then it becomes their project, and they host it going forward? Because we are authorized to support historical societies, which we do that every year, but that was just what was coming to mind, is could it actually be their project and you're just contributing to? But then that goes against what you were just saying, as far as, then they would be making that deal, but.
But at this moment, they're not in a position to make that deal.
Sure.
But in the future, in the future, they would take it over.
You could always turn it over to them, absolutely.
I don't think the city would have any problem handing over that deal.
I think that's the marriage that makes most sense, so. I, I think that's the marriage that makes most sense, so.
All right.
Your honor, members, I'm just, yeah, I, I, I fully understand where we're going with this, and I'll just say, we're going to keep going with it, I, I don't, I don't want to have to wait for other approvals because of the, the tight timeline, so we're just going to run with it, pull all these pieces together, and if not, you know, value an effort, but we're going to do what we can.
Thank you.
My only concern is, going through with this, as long as it doesn't affect the timeline, if they can't do it within the timeline, then, then I'm not in favor of it.
And that's, that's in the motion. Right, good. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. Numbered up, RTC possible preservation project update, Councilmember Scott Kwame.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow that contacted me, just as a review, is a fellow named Fitzy from Duluth, he's with Northern Bedrock Historical, I don't remember the name of it all of a sudden. The organization does all different kinds of things, masonry repair, cleanup, landscaping, painting, things like that, and they were willing to bring in a crew of their people, six to eight people probably, for a week to 10 days, to do some kind of a project, and, and they thought that the Kirkbride building was a terrific place for them to do the kinds of things that they do. One of the things that I learned in further conversation with Fitzy was, one of the things that they do not do is mold remediation. That would have been one of the first things that would need to be done, if they were going to come in and try to do whatever project it would, might be as far as an indoor project, there might be still lots of things that they could do outdoors. We talked about, or there was conversation about how the Friends of the Kirkbride could perhaps be involved in, in supporting their, this idea, and maybe even funding this organization coming in, and I've talked to the Friends of the Kirkbride, and they would be very interested in supporting this effort. The goal, that seems to be the top goal for the Friends of the Kirkbride, whether involved this specifically or something else, is to get the building open for tours again. And so if there was a way that this organization that Fitzy is a part of could help clean up and prepare a place, a way for, you know, the public to be able to get inside and get a look at the building and have the tours again, that would be the, the piece of the puzzle that the Friends would be very supportive of, and the rationale for getting behind it. So what that boils down to is, if we, as a council, agree that the center tower building is the primary, long-term going-to-be-saved building, and there seems to be a general agreement on that, no one's suggested that anything's going to happen to that building ever, it would seem that we could focus our efforts on that, try to find a way to get the mold taken care of in that building, and sealed in such a way so that a group like this AmeriCorps group could come in and do the next things, either painting, cleanup, landscaping, so that that building could get open for tours, and that course would draw in, for example, the Friends of the Kirkbride to fund this kind of work. I think that there's probably not a, not a practical way to see this coming together this season. In talking with Fitzy, their calendar still had some gaps or some spaces in it for this summer for them to come for potential projects. But, as it actually plays out for this summer's work schedule, we'd have to really hop on it, so to speak, to get something put together for them to plug into. So at this point, the topic that I think this really opens is, how can we, as a city, how can we work to seal and secure that main tower building and deal with the mold question so that that can be opened up for tours? And that's about all I can really bring to the council today as an update on this.
Thanks, Scott, I think you bring up a good point about the, the main tower building, I think we would all, all right, I should say, it would seem to me that would be good for the community to, to have those tours, I know people enjoyed them. So, is that something that we could, not today, but we've gone, we've talked about with Bruce, who's given us the mold remediations of the entire sections of the, of the building, could we, could at least staff bring, have we ever looked at just the tower and what that, how that would look?
A few years ago, some.
Stantex, sorry, Stantex.
Dehumidifiers were purchased, and they're running the basement of the tower every summer season or every warm season, and that has basically taken care of the mold in that building, and then with the proposed project deconstruction, that will seal off more of the basement hallway tunnel access that will further help eliminate the moisture in that area, so I think the mold question in that building has been answered, taken care of.
Yeah. So, am I understanding you then, Guy, to say, if we wanted to even start tours in June during Summerfest, would that even be a possibility? I mean, it's clean enough that we could do that?
Your honor, members, with the active construction site, I would, I would be not in favor of that at all this summer, and, you know, we would need some guarantees or assurances as to how this would be structured. There's a, once you're in the building, you can get anywhere in the building, and there'd have to be some serious parameters around, because there are, there are concerns in other areas of the building, very big concerns in my mind, related to air quality and mold, and figuring out who would be providing tours, I obviously don't want staff time to be eaten up by that, and, and I have concerns about how things were conducted in the past and people making money off of the public asset. There's a lot of questions, I think, that need to be answered, and a lot of hurdles that would have to be overcome before even just simply opening up the tower to allow the public to, to go in there, and there's a lot of liability questions in my mind, and, Chief, I don't know if you have anything to expound from there, but.
I just, I know we removed a lot of the biological material that grows mold in the tower, but just the way the building was constructed, we don't have control over the airflow and the circulation of the building, so there's, there's some work that needs to be done there before I think it would be safe to have people going in there unprotected as far as the respiratory concerns go, so, not to say that it can't happen, but I definitely think we have to do a lot more work as staff to ensure the safety of the people going in than before we just open the door, but.
We have to get through Phase II, is what, is what is your, is your recommendation?
I think there's no question, I mean, I, I think it would be irresponsible of us to put people in that building while it's an active construction site, and, and, you know, knowing that the buildings directly behind the tower are going to be essentially lopped off and then that wall rebuilt, I mean, I, I think it's just, there's, there's no question in my mind that this summer is not a good idea.
And I would just say that if that is the direction that the council wants us to go, I, I think that's something that we would potentially plan for next year, knowing that this is what you want us to do, and, and we'll obviously have to work with Brian to ensure that, you know, we take the proper steps to kind of control the, the airflow through the, through the building.
And we have some time for that discussion.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, but I think.
But it's a good point.
Theoretically, the earliest would be probably next season, if that's the direction you wanted to go.
Sure, thanks, Chief. Brent?
I have two concerns on this, number one, the budget and the amount of money we'd be spending on it, and number two, dealing with older buildings, as long as I've been around, I would not be in favor of doing this, because until that beating, that building is heated, any of the work you've done, I mean, that's where a lot of the damage has been done already, 34 below in the winter, everything else, until you can control the moisture coming up out of that, until you can control, get some heat in that building, you're putting money into restoration that could literally fall apart within the next of five to 10 years, and if you don't have a developer that comes in, you just took a whole lot of money and threw it out the door.
Thank you, Brent, and I think we can have that discussion as we get through Phase II. Thank you, Brent, okay, we'll move along, unless anyone has anything else on that, we'll move along to item number 12, front-end loader purchase.
Thank you, your honor, just seeking authorization to purchase a, a loader. Loader was planned for replacement this year, it's actually the loader that's a carryover from the old waste energy facility that we've proposed to trade. It's just seeing a lot of maintenance costs, and so with that and the scheduling of the replacement, seeking to get your authorization to purchase a John Deere front-end loader for a purchase price of $99,534.80, and that does reflect a $29,000 trade-in of the unit 631 2004 Volvo, which I'd also request for you to declare as surplus property.
Thank you, Guy, are there any questions? Would someone like to make that recommendation to the council? Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And how about a truck purchase, Guy?
Yes, requesting authorization to purchase a Freightliner truck chassis that would be equipped with Chris Steel equipment, it'll be a plow truck with a front plow, a wing plow, and a pre-wet system and a sander. So this truck will replace four, three other trucks in the fleet with the configuration that we're looking at. Those trucks will still be in use, when we order a truck now, it's about a year to get it, so we'll need to keep those trucks in the fleet until we receive this truck in about a year, so we'll seek that surplus authori- authorization of those three other trucks sometime within the year. It's a purchase price of $177,150.54, and to note, both of these purchases would be through Sourcewell, former NJPA, or off the state contract.
Thank you, Guy. Any questions?
Second.
Second.
Third.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And the last item on our agenda is surplus items, again, Guy Taylor.
Yeah, thank you. I placed on your desk a list of equipment that we'd like to have you declare surplus property, and we will post all of those items for sale on the Kbid auction, or GovDeals auction site, and dispose of them at, with your approval.
Is your motion ready? Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Krista?
I'll let you have the seconds to.
All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. There are two additional items, but because of the time, I'm going to suggest that we have, take those to Monday night. One is Scott Kwame had a Otter Tail Power River Studies subject that he wanted to talk about, and RC Drews has a book project that he wants to talk about, but I think, we have a meeting at 8:30 coming up, so rather than rush those items this morning, I'd like to move those to Monday night, if that's okay with everyone, you're able to be here on Monday night, Scott, you're here on Monday night? So, with that, I just wanted to say, today is Ryan Veatlock's last meeting with us, he didn't spend a lot of time with us, but the time he did spend was very productive, and we really, really appreciate the work that you've done and your spirit of cooperation, so thanks for your time, and Ferguson, good, best of luck to you and your future endeavors. Thank you. With that, we adjourn.